Hey Reed, I'm a city councillor here and I'm acting mayor, so I'm taking over for Mayor Stewart, who hopefully will be joining us shortly. I would like to welcome you all here this evening. This is a public hearing into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the deputy clerk. The council for the city of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and directed that this public hearing be held. Staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of the proposed bylaw. The floor will then be open to anyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered will be given first opportunity to speak. I stress to all of you that this is a public hearing. It is an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications. It is not a question and answer period. It is not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either council members, staff, or those in the audience who may be opposed to your particular view. I ask that you restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw, to be as brief and concise as possible. We are asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak is able to do so. Speakers are permitted to speak more than once only if they are providing new or additional information. I ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, or booing any presentation made this evening. As chair of the hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that does not relate to the bylaw, becomes abusive, or becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council members. Please note, if you wish to provide a written submission to be included in the record of the meeting, you must hand in that submission to the clerk prior to the adjournment of the related item on the agenda. Please also note, council may not receive any additional information, written or verbal, after adjournment of the public hearing and prior to consideration of the respective bylaws at the next council meeting. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, a regular council meeting will convene in order that council may give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda. However, if during the public hearing council requests further information related to an item, consideration of that item will be deferred pending receipt of the requested information. I will now call on Mr. Gilbert to introduce the other bylaws on tonight's agenda and planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first item this evening is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw 3000 to rezone the property at 283 Hart Street and the adjacent lane from RT1 Two Family Residential to P4 Special Care Institutional. This is bylaw 4434, and Ms. Tiffany is here to introduce the item.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Could you just adjust the presentation there? So that it's Ctrl-L? There we go. Thank you. This site is located on the east side of Hart Street, south of the intersection of Alderson Avenue, Lowheed Highway, and Hart Street. The site currently has a single-family residential dwelling. The site and surrounding area is designated neighborhood attached residential in the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site and the immediate surrounding area is RT1 Two Family Residential. The applicant is requesting rezoning to P4 Special Care Institutional. The intent of this zone is to provide for services directly related to the care of children in residential neighborhoods. Staff are recommending second and third readings to rezoning by law number 4434.
Thank you. I have a registered speaker's list on this item of two people. The first speaker being Danuta Rodsky. Okay. The second person is Gunner Larson. Come forward, please.
Yes, hello. My name is Gunner Larson. I live at 281 Hart Street, which is right next door.
Thank you.
Property number 13. We've lived in that house for 21 years since 1992 and in the area since 1998. We've always had good neighbors and enjoyed the property and everything. We're starting to be a little concerned with quite a large daycare next door. It's going to affect the way that we live with the parking lot and with lots of cars going in and out. And I understand the proposal is for up to 40 children and five staff members, which could mean as many as 45 extra cars each morning and each evening trying to pick up and drop off during the day. With up to 40 children next door, I'm concerned with losing our quiet and our privacy that we've been enjoying for this many years. Also, the exhaust from the cars and the noise of the cars going in and out at possibly all different times of the day. Our driveway and the Hart driveway, or the 283 Hart driveway, they're side by side. And I anticipate people stopping in our driveway and dropping kids off, back and forth and picking them up. We already have cars that come in the driveway and turn around and many times block the driveway, so it's a little hard to get back and forth. The road in front of our house is already very busy and very narrow. There's cars parked on both sides of the street, and with cars parked there, you can't get back and forth. So somebody has to pull over and wait all the time, which does take time, and it does affect when you're driving up and down there. And during the winter, there's a slight little hill in the road in front of our house, and that hill gets so slippery and icy all the time. One person even hit my daughter's car that was parked out in front. I was luckily out there shoveling the driveway, and I helped him push it off, so it didn't really do much damage. But it can be a little bit of a problem. The other thing is the feeder road at Alderson, where it goes Alderson Avenue and Lowheed Highway and Hart Street, that little intersection in there with the light. It gets so busy in there with cars and people not really knowing what to do to stop properly and to make left-hand turns or right-hand turns. I've seen examples of road rage out there where people have stopped and started yelling and screaming at other people. There are other entrances into our little area besides the one at Lowheed Highway, but the other ones at Delestra and North Road, you'd have to go through that intersection anyways to be able to get to it. And it's down that busy road, Delestra, with all the apartment buildings on it, so it's very busy as well. The other one is just Bernacci and Henderson Avenue to get back and forth, and that means a long trip around on really what is essentially quite narrow streets. So I'm a little concerned with losing the quiet and the way that we've been able to enjoy our property. I'm kind of planning on retiring in the next couple of years, and it would be nice to be able to stay home and be able to do that. I'm also a bit concerned with having up to 40 kids next door. It might be a little difficult if I decide to sell my house, and I'm not exactly sure what that would do with the property values as well. I have talked to a real estate person about it, and they seem to think it might not affect the property value, but the type of people or the people that might wish to buy our property might be something that we'd have to worry about a little bit later.
Okay. Councillor O'Neill, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Larson, and it's a point of information as well. Are you familiar with or have you seen the traffic impact study done by Creative Transportation Solutions?
Yes, I have seen it.
And they've looked into this in some detail. It's a mini-traffic review. And basically, the bottom line is they seem to indicate that there's not going to be a major -- their analysis is that there won't be a major --
We were there. I saw them there in the summer, out counting cars. And if you go down there now, anytime during the week, you could see, well, maybe not Mondays, but from Tuesdays to Fridays, it's very busy down there with a lot of cars parked on both sides of the street and very difficult to get back and forth through that area.
Okay. And while you're here, and it's a point that you raised, it's a question for staff. He talked about his driveway being right next to the current driveway at the house. It's hard for me to tell on the site plans we have here. Is the access and egress from the proposed daycare going to be the same as it currently is now, or is it going to be improved?
Yes. Through the chair, the access should improve. We're actually relocating it further north, so it'll be moved away from the property owner, more to the central, more for central location on the site. There'll be all new frontage improvements included, including new curb, gutter, sidewalks, street trees, brand-new driveway letdown. So all of the frontage will be improved, and there'll be a separation from this driveway to the gentleman's driveway.
Does that improve frontage, extend to his house?
No, through the chair. It ends at the property line.
Right, I thought so. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If I may, through to staff, can you confirm that it is for 40 kids and five staff?
Yes, through the chair, it is. That's the intent of the applicant, and that's the basis on which we've proceeded forward. It is licensed, young preschool children. As noted by one of the council members, there was a detailed analysis undertaken of the kind of childcare facility established here, which those of us who have small children can attest, there's a distribution of traffic in drop-off. It's not like school. So I think they've clearly identified this issue in their traffic analysis. So that is the intent. It's 40 children, five staff. The expectation is a handful of the staff may or may not drive here. Often, childcare workers live in the area. There's some propensity for that as well. But certainly, they've accommodated both an allowance for onsite parking for the staff. The other factor relating to parking is that we are aware that there's some overflow parking issues around neighboring businesses, and we are working with the transportation division of the engineering and public works, where the city is looking to establish some time limits on that street to ensure there's turnover of traffic or parking that would allow parents to drop off their kids, more availability of on-street parking on Hart.
And you have six onsite parking stalls.
Yes, there's six onsite stalls.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Asmussen, you have a question?
Yes. Now, it's a Monday-to-Friday daycare operation. The hours are approximately, what, six to six on the operation?
Yes, I believe it might be seven --
Seven?
Seven thirty a.m., and I think it goes to 6:00 p.m.
Six p.m., yes. Okay. And so those kids will generally be dropped off probably between, 40 kids probably between an hour range on average?
Yes. My experience with this is within around one or one and a half hours where all the children get dropped off. You may find a handful of them, five, six, seven, maybe within the same time, but quite often, it's just a few kids being dropped off at one time.
So, yeah, you're not going to have all these cars showing up at one time. They'll be coming in over hour, hour-and-a-half spreads. If you take 40, you break it down over the time. It's just a few at a time.
Yes, this kind of daycare. It's not preschool or after-school, so you get the small children. And this is what we see in the traffic studies that are undertaken for these type of daycare uses, is that distribution curve, which helps even out the number of vehicles coming to and from the site.
My other question is, when we talk about 40, but this is, daycare is situated for this catchment area, so for the people living with this in the area. So I would also assume that people would be walking their children, hopefully, to this site?
That is the goal. The goal is, and these smaller facilities are intended to serve a more localized need, so the hope is, and typically it is what occurs, is that you get neighborhood usage of these smaller facilities. And so there are people in the area that would walk their children from their homes.
Okay. I'd like to see some more in our reports when we do these things, sort of emphasizing that part with the catchment area. And I know we have all these cars driving to elementary schools and everything, and I think we want to find a way to make this work, but it also gets people out of their cars and having their kids walk to these events, these places. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies. And my thanks to Councillor Reed. I see no other speakers. Are there any speakers to this item?
Good evening, your worship, acting worship, members of council, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jan Voss. I'm a professional traffic engineer with the firm CTS, or Creative Transportation Solutions. That's based in Port Moody. We're located at 84A Moody Street. I just want to take a couple minutes to answer some, provide some additional commentary to some of the comments raised by the member from the public, as well as from council and staff. Our firm was engaged to do an independent traffic impact assessment for the proposed daycare. We've done over 250 impact assessments in B.C. in the last 20 years. In the last three months, we've done impact assessments of three separate daycare centers in Metro Vancouver, including two here in Coquitlam. The first comment I want to mention was regards to the size of the daycare. This is the smallest of the three daycare sites we've looked at. Although 40 may seem like a large number, most of the daycare centers we look at are typically in the range of about 80 students and up to 10 or 11 staff. There was a comment made with regards to the amount of traffic that will be generated by the site. Our analysis showed that in the morning, it would be 34 cars during the busiest hour of the morning, and 49 cars during the busiest hour in the afternoon. Now, put that in perspective, that's less than one car a minute. So if you stand on the road and you watch the traffic going to and from the site, it would be about one car every 59 seconds before someone either drives in or drives out. So from a traffic engineering point of view, this is a low volume of traffic. There was a comment made with regards to the fact this was a mini-study. There are formal traffic impact studies, which are for sites that generate a lot of traffic, and there's these, we're now starting to see more and more of these things called mini-studies. And these are for developments that generate typically less traffic. 100 or more is a threshold, but the important thing is the impacts are very localized. It's effectively an access study for the application. And so when we looked at the access for the site, we took a look at the projected traffic volumes. So even though it's a mini-study, it's a full-blown analysis in terms of the site access and the frontage along the roadway. We did meet with staff, and we did also look at the intersection of Alderson Avenue and Hart Street in great detail, because that was a concern that was raised by staff. Concern about cars blocking on Hart Street was raised earlier. We did a comprehensive parking survey on June 10th, so this was before the summer break. It was on a Monday, and we surveyed from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., because we wanted to capture the buildup. And, well, typically, what happens in a residential community is that your parking drops off in the morning. There's lots of spare parking, and it builds up again in the evening when residents return home. And this particular neighborhood was just the opposite on Hart Street. We found there was actually a buildup of parking. It stayed constant throughout the day, and after 5:00, it disappeared again. And what we surmised from our surveys was that there was a lot of employees from nearby businesses that were using Hart Street as an overflow parking lot, because there is no parking restrictions on there in effect. And so that was unusual. So, yes, there are parking issues there right now, but I think it's a management issue as opposed to more that nearby residents perhaps are parking on-street. I mentioned Hart Street and Lowheed and Alderson before. We did make recommendations and report to staff on how we believe the intersection can be improved, including painting white crosshatching so that the intersection remains unblocked, so cars can at least go up and down Hart Street, for example. And there is discussions about parking on-site. Six stalls are currently being proposed. The municipal bylaw for our street's just calling for five, so we're recommending that the six parking space, which is a surplus parking, be labeled for pickup-dropoff zones. So there is some opportunity for some parking on-site for those parents to drop off. The other thing I was going to mention was demand to spread out. Some of you touched on that earlier, is that in a lot of our surveys that we've done recently, we found that for daycare centers, there's no described start time like at a typical elementary school, like 8:55 a.m., where everyone has to be there for attendance. We find that the arrival and departure patterns are fairly flat throughout the day, basically between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. and from about 3:00 o'clock onwards. So the nice thing about that is you don't have this huge spike in traffic for five minutes, which creates a lot of the operational problems that we normally expect or see around school sites. And so for daycare centers, it's a lot different. And then there was a discussion about sidewalks and connectivity. Although the applicant is proposing a sidewalk in front of their frontage to facilitate any curbside drop-off pickup, we're also recommending that some sort of a temporary sidewalk be extended up to Lowheed Highway so that the site is fully connected with the rest of the community's pedestrian network. That way, too, the staff and if parents want to do that as well, they can access the three bus stops that are within 400-meter walking distance of the site. So in conclusion, I believe that the impacts and the parking impacts are well documented in our report, and I believe that the solutions will address the concerns both from the community and if anyone else has them. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Please come forward.
My name is Susan Sorensen, and I live at 705 Roderick Avenue, which is just down one further block. That's not shown on the map. And I'm just here on behalf of two of their neighbors that were unable to attend this evening. One neighbor lives on spot number 43, and the other down at spot number 11. And we are concerned about the access from the intersection down around the corner onto Hart Street. It is very short and narrow, and there is an incline. Coming home, addressing off Lowheed Highway, it anyway to come down onto Hart is a three-way stop, and that's the only place where we know people turning left have the right-of-way. Three-way stop, we got the little signs added, and it hasn't really helped. It's a highway coming up Alderson down from North Road with traffic trying to cut away from North Road. They come up through the neighborhood, and it's a very, very difficult, short intersection. And every day is a scene of road rage, and for everybody that lives in the neighborhood trying to access. So with the daycare being right there, I don't know how far that driveway is from that corner, but it's, there's not a great distance there in the traffic. I think will pile up tremendously. So that's our big concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Oops. Councillor Nicholson on that.
Thank you, your worship.
One moment, please, sir. Councillor Nicholson.
Well, I actually have a question for the gentleman who did the traffic study, if Didn't expect to be the only person with a question for you, which was why I wasn't quick enough on the button.
That's okay, sir.
And let you go away. Paragraph seven on page 28 of your report. We only have two pages of your report in our package. You say, "The provincial warrant for triggering a full traffic impact study is 100 or more new vehicle trips during the busiest hour. Proposed development only meets the provincial warrant by 49 percent, thus confirming the traffic impacts will be minor." And I'm not sure I follow the logic. The traffic impact, a traffic impact of 49 percent might be major or might be minor, and I think it would depend on considerable other factors, like in this particular case, the intersection issues around the neighborhood, the shortness of the block, and a whole variety of other things. You know, a 49 percent increase in a one-block street, or sorry, one-lot street would certainly be significant. So I'm not sure that describing it as minor is appropriate.
Sure.
But you're the one with the degree.
That's a very good question. The province of B.C., as well as many of their provincial and state authorities, they set a, basically, a trigger for when certain types of studies need to be done, and it's similar for whether it's an environmental impact assessment and other fields. In the case of traffic impact studies, so that not every application for development or redevelopment has to pay the cost and the effort to do a traffic impact study, the traffic engineers across North America basically decide, what's this line, this threshold, for when there's enough traffic to actually warrant a concern? The threshold normally uses 100 or more new vehicle trips in the busiest hour of the week. So it could be 50 in and 50 out, or it could be 100 out and none coming in. When I made that statement, it's basically just to reaffirm that this is a mini-study and that normally, someone like myself would not even be doing a formal traffic impact study for this particular site, but because of concerns raised by staff and I guess community members in the past, we decided to at least quantify what the impacts would be. Yes, there will be an increase in traffic, but from my professional point of view, the volume of traffic is very negligible. I mean, and the operational improvements that we've recommended, including the intersection of Alderson and Hart, yes, they would help. Some of our signs, some of them are painted markings, pavement markings, but when I look at the volumes that are on Hart Street, we measure them, during the morning rush hour, 68 vehicles, which is just over one car a minute. In the afternoon, it's 69 vehicles. So from my point of view, for the data we've got, it's very hard to quantify a big problem. There's some operational things that could be addressed with some signage and pavement markings and those who are documented. So I hope that clarifies that 49 percent threshold is basically to reaffirm that this is a mini-study, and the impacts, once you get one intersection downstream, they start becoming almost immeasurable.
I appreciate that, but I think what I'm hearing from the neighbors
Uh-huh.
is that traffic is an issue on that street, and any increase in traffic is not minor to them.
Yes.
Which is something I'll have to think about. The other one was, Mr. Larson, I think it was, told us, I think, that there's a significant difference between the parking on Monday and Tuesday through Friday, and I know you were there on a Monday. And I don't know whether, from your vast experience, you can say that variations between Monday and the balance of the week are a common occurrence, or something that you'd find unlikely, or whether you'd like to comment on that at all. But I thought I'd give you the opportunity.
Sure. No, it's a good, it's a good question. On the Monday, June 10th, that was our official survey date. And so what we did was we chose a day where School District 43 was in full session and things were normal as far as traffic volumes concerned. Both our project engineer did a comprehensive site visit on another day. I did my own site visit on other days. So we've been to the site at least three times, in addition to just general drive-bys, just to sort of see what's happening in the neighborhood. And what I can tell you is that there is lots of parking there on-street right now, and one of our key recommendations is that staff implement a timed parking restriction, just Monday to Friday, when the daycare is in operation, so that other people besides these employees can park there. In the case of the parking that's on there right now, we sort of see that whole eastern section of Hart Street facing the site at least be time-restricted so that we can encourage more parking turnover. And that parking turnover would just be between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. and typically between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. The rest of the time, there should be nobody parked there, except for the odd special visitor in the middle of the day. So.
Do you happen to have any sense of whether those time restrictions would impact residents rather than employees a block and a half away?
They shouldn't impact residents unless they decide to sleep in, because our recommendation to staff is that the time restrictions be in place from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday to Friday, when the daycare is, would normally be in operation. And then on weekends and at night, visitors and residents can park as long as they choose to on that section of Hart Street. So it's basically sharing the right-of-way, and it gives the property owner an opportunity to use some of the curbside parking that they have some right to use, as well as their nearby residents.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councillor O'Neill. Thank you. And this is another traffic-related issue. Could be our engineers, our planning department, or perhaps a traffic engineer here. The Schedule A that's on the big screen there shows Gerard Street to the east, intersecting with Lowheed Highway. Attachment one shows that Gerard Street actually reaches a dead end before it reaches Lowheed, and Google Maps also shows that Gerard dead-ends before it reaches Lowheed. And before I realized that, when I was looking at Attachment A Schedule A, I thought, wow, gosh, there's, there are already a little island totally surrounded by swirling traffic all around it. And that was assuming that the traffic was coming off of Lowheed Highway and getting onto Gerard there. But is it correct that, is the aerial view in Attachment one correct, that Gerard actually doesn't intersect, does not intersect with Lowheed Highway? So Gerard's a dead end at the east end there. Is that correct?
Ah, yes, that's absolutely correct. It is a dead end.
There's the picture there.
Dead end road.
Yeah. So that's, the Attachment A that was, that was up there earlier was the legal, I guess, the legal view of what the street could be.
Yes.
But it's not that way now. So the thought that, that led to the impression that there might have been more traffic swirling around than there, than there actually would be, certainly on Gerard and Lowheed anyway. So, thank you. Good. Okay.
Okay, and that's it. If you want to come forward now, someone wanted to speak. There we go. Yeah, it is.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Amber D. Pandesar, and I have actually lived in the Coquitlam area for quite a, quite a while. I grew up there on 656 Gerard Avenue. Not only have I grown up there, but I've also developed a lot of R2-1 zonings, particularly in the Coquitlam area, Millardville area. We have, in the past, developed 656, 654. Currently, our projected projects are on 574 Sunset, 572 Sunset. We developed 712, 714, and we have a few proceeding on 720 Roderick Avenue. And just in, when, just the traffic in that localized region, it is already a big impact to us with the Kia dealership being there. On, the study was conducted June 10th. That's not taking into consideration the yearly and annual sales they have, the summer event, Christmas events, when it, when it gets really busy. And plus, on the June 10th is a Monday, so not all preschool kindergarten kids are attending on that day. From, that's conducted from my own study from my nieces and everything, so that accounts for about 300 students in that localized area. On top of that, it, overall, the day was selective by the engineer, just the current way the traffic is situated there. It is a one-way traffic. There is no room for any more cars or anything. Not only will the realtors like to, when we sell homes, the realtors like to call this particular area the Bermuda Triangle because we only have three points of access, entrance and exit. So it's, we only have the Hart Street that goes on to the Lowheed Highway, as well as the DeLester Avenue, which goes to North Road, and the Henderson. Now, from the homes we've done in the past there, we've had to pay a price in regards to, you know, pay a price for the congestion and to accommodate the new buyers. In that, we have lost nearly $300,000 in revenue due to those sales in that one particular area. And that's all I can say. So all I can say is, you know, PM4 is, you know, should just be out the door. Thank you.
Okay, sir. As a question, sir? 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 Counselor Asmussen.
I just want to run a couple of things by, to, the consultant came up and said with the city that they want to put in restrictive parking on that street to block the ability of the Kia and people parking on that street.
Yeah.
So that should be an improvement for, wouldn't you, because that's what the consultant was saying, if we put that restrictive parking in.
Yeah, that restrictive parking will work. Every home there, everyone has up to three, three vehicles. Every household now, fathers, you know, father, wife, and son.
But I'm just saying, he observed that most of the parking seemed to be not from the residents.
Yeah.
But from the Kia or other areas, maybe it's from in there. So if it's restrictive parking, they can't park there, that should create more space on that street.
Oh, it just caused more congestion, everyone parking closer together on the adjoining properties.
Hmm. And I guess the other piece of information that could be happening is Kia's looking at moving.
Well, BMW was once there too, but due to the price changes, I don't think they were doing really good in sales, so I guess that's why Kia came. I don't know who else will be there afterwards, so let's just see how the market pans out.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. There's no question that I think the traffic engineers in the room would look at that, that intersection at Alderson, Hart, and Lowheed as being a textbook, textbook case of try to fix this, and it might be on the final exam in fact. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, any other speakers to this item? No council members? I'll declare this item closed.
The second item in this evening's public hearing is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw 3000 in order to rezone the subject property outlined in black to bylaw, oh, sorry. I haven't done a public hearing yet. It's an application to amend the City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw 3000 to rezone the property at 1392 Kingston Street from RS2 one-family suburban residential to RS11 estate single-family residential and P5 special park. This is bylaw 4436.
Good evening again. This site is located on a southwest corner of Kingston Street and Princeton Avenue. The site currently has a single-family residential dwelling. The site is designated estate, single-family, and environmentally sensitive area in the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site and to the south, east, and west is RS2 one-family suburban residential. Zoning to the north, RT2 townhouse residential, P5 special park, and RS9 large, single-family residential. The applicant is requesting rezoning in conformance with the official community plan designation to RS11 estate, single-family residential, and P5 special park to facilitate subdivision into four estate, single-family lots. Staff are recommending all final readings to rezoning by law number 4436. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Counselor Reed.
Yes, through to staff. I take it that the applicant is quite well aware that they're only allowed one basement suite in a house?
Your worship, the, we've had no discussions with the applicant around that specific matter. They certainly understand the RS11 zone. It only allows one suite, yes. But we haven't had any specific, we've presented them with the zone, they understand the zoning requirements, and we've had no discussion specifically on that issue. We certainly make them aware.
I, I think you would, and any of the others that are being built up there. It seems that some of the new homes, they're asking for one suite, which they're allowed, and it happens an extra one just pops up in the basement somehow magically. So I think we've got to put a stop to that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do it again. Okay. Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you. Just to suggest you can be a little specific in your discussions with the developer, the phrase that I've heard used is nanny suite, which some seem to believe isn't really a suite. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll do it again. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? The third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? I'll declare this item and the public hearing closed. Actually, before we...